Presentation on the U.S. 24 Highway Proactive Corridor Code Enforcement. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As has been our practice the last several years, our code enforcement staff in the Community Development Department engaged in a proactive code enforcement sweep this past winter. Given that this is an important community and council priority, we wanted to make sure we highlighted this for the benefit of all. So, Community Development Director Tom Skinnell is here to provide an overview of that initiative.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. As the city manager has mentioned, my name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. And giving you kind of a brief overview of the 24 Highway proactive corridor code enforcement that we recently kicked off. So, the city's proactive corridor code enforcement started back in 2017. 2017 was the year that the Independence for All Strategic Plan was adopted by the city council. In that plan, it set the objectives of reducing blight and improving visual appearance. And so, in 2017, we started our corridor code enforcement. The first one was along 24 Highway. 2018, we came back and we worked U.S. 40 Highway from West City Limits to Nolan Road, and then from Nolan Road from 40 Highway up to I-70, excuse me. And then 2019, moved to Truman Road again from West City Limits to Nolan Road. In 2020, we took a pause. That was the year that we migrated from the DOS base HTE system to City Works. So, that took all of our efforts and several months to transition from playing on the green screens to playing with 21st century technology. 2021, we picked back up the corridor code enforcement and worked Wilson Road. And then 2022 was, as I mentioned, 24 Highway. When we do these proactive code enforcement, we take a proactive, multidisciplined approach. So, the Community Development Department leads the efforts, but we include the fire departments, health departments, and municipal services, so that we're not only looking at code enforcement violations, but also looking now for public health, safety, and environmental concerns that may be found when staff is out doing these inspections. When we do one of these corridors, they're several miles long, and we need to break that up. And we do that for a couple of reasons. One, so that the staff who are working those proactive code enforcement cases can spend the time to find all of the violations there, if there are any, but also it allows them time to work their normal caseloads. So, these would be the complaints that citizens make, so that we do not see that level of service drop. This year, we started in mid-January with our corridor code enforcement. So, as I mentioned, we broke the corridor up into four different segments this year, each one lasting about a week where staff would be out going and visiting each one of these properties and identifying any violations that they found. And if there were violations that needed to be referred to another department, say the Health Department or Municipal Services, they did that. So, this first segment here is from the West City Limits to around Brookside. Second segment covers from the Wilson Road Bridge along 24 Highway to Sterling. I would like to point out that the properties that they inspected are highlighted in the blue with the red boundary around them. Segment three covers Sterling to River. And then the last segment was from Spring to Nolan Road. So, in total, 159 properties were inspected out of those. A total of 72 code enforcement cases were started. An additional 15 violations were found and referred to other departments. So, we found two additional vacant structures. 11 were referred for business license violations. This could be, they had a delinquent business license, they were operating a business outside of what their business license was for, or some other aspect associated with business license. There was one violation that they found that was referred to the Health Department and one to Municipal Services. Out of those 72 properties where they found violations, there were a total of 133 violations that were found. Two-thirds of them consist of trash, open storage, tall grass and weeds, and NOVs, or non-operable vehicles. The other third runs the gamut from someone who parked on the grass, building maintenance, fence maintenance, not having the proper screening around the dumpster, sign violations, dumpster in the right-of-way, graffiti, those types of complaints. So, the results out of, so these numbers are from a week ago, so March 7th. So, we gained voluntary compliance in just under half of the cases that we've worked. We ordered abatements on just under 10%. So, we're at about a 60% compliance rate right now. In some cases, so a little over a third is where we have remaining violations or where we've granted extensions. You're probably thinking, why'd you grant extensions? Those would be for things like fence maintenance, getting in compliance with business licensing, screening dumpsters, those types of things that you really can't do when the weather's been pretty rotten the last couple of weeks. So, hopefully, over the next couple of weeks, we increase that to around 90%. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom, thank you, and thanks to the team for getting out and doing that. I know with some of our challenges with COVID and some of the other things that's taken place over the past year, staffing, limited hours, all that stuff, so thank you for getting on that. A lot of big improvements. So, this helps out not only sightly, for sure, but it also gives me good, gives the city good talking points when I have meetings, have had meetings set up and have meetings in the future set up with Councilman Bunch, my counterpart on Kansas City. And it's good to be able to explain to him what we are doing, as opposed to talking about their side of the city line there. So, showing him the proactiveness is very much something that we are working for to have to move Kansas City forward a little bit more aggressively. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our next presentation is an overview of sanitary sewer rates. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. I know many of you have relayed on to me that you receive questions from time to time about our sanitary sewer rate schedule, how it's calculated and applied, and components of a customer bill. So, we've asked our Director of Municipal Services, Lisa Reynolds, to give an update on that and answer some of those frequently asked questions, and she's here tonight to do so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, sorry, allergy season is in full swing for me, so I apologize. As the city manager said, we get, you guys get questions often, they get referred back, and I try and answer them as best I can to relay that information to the resident. But typically, we get four major questions. It's where do we, how do we compare to other neighboring utilities? Why is sewer more than water? What's with this winter quarter thing? Why do we build that way? And then, why, what is this $12 fee on my bill? So, those are the things I'm going to address tonight, and then obviously, if you have questions along the way, feel free to stop me. This is just an overview of all the things that our rates cover. This is information that I understand you have, but one thing that we often look past and don't really talk about very often is when we talk about operating expenses, what exactly that entails? That's taking, that's operation of a system on the sewer side that's 618 miles of sanitary sewer main, 13 lift stations, a treatment plant that does, on an average, 10 million gallons of sewage a day and can treat up to 32 million gallons of sewage, as well as about 15,000 related structures that go along with those pipelines. So, just keep that in mind as, you know, we look at budget and what our rates are actually covering. For the visual among you, this is just a quick reference chart of where we compare versus some of the surrounding areas, and up to and including Springfield and Columbia and similar utilities. Where they're in the green, kind of high side of middle. One thing to keep in mind when we talk about rates and where we compare is that it's never truly an apples-to-apples comparison. Some of the things to consider would be, do the people that are lower or higher than us, do they have treatment? Or do they just send it to someplace else, like Little Blue Valley or something like that? Have they entered into a consent decree? For us, that certainly matters. What does their customer mix look like? If they have a lot of industrial customers, obviously, then there's surcharges that go along with that that residential doesn't carry. So, there are a lot of things that can make that, you know, they're cheaper, but they have 80% industrial and they have lagoons for treatment. So, we have a mechanical plant. If you just have lagoons, obviously, not as costly a system to run. So, just lots of nuances there. And another big thing to consider is on the water and sewer side, is is there another funding mechanism other than rates? So, for instance, the city I used to work for, tap fees on the water side today are just over $4,000 and change for a single residential tap, for a water tap for a house. Our cost is $140. So, gross difference there. And what that community has decided to do with those fees is the concept is, development should not be paid by the residents that are already here, it should be paid by the residents coming in. And so, they fund all their major construction projects with those fees. That's not something, obviously, we opted to do here to date. So, that is just another thing to look at. Sewer connection fee is similar. Ours here, on the expensive side, would be 1,500. On the cheap side, 200, depending on if there's a Y available and things like that. A lot of communities have gone to, I've seen them as high as a $5,000 tap fee for sewer, or more commonly, it's a cost per drain. A lot of them are $30, $30 to $40 per drain in a house. And if you look, like, every sink, if you have a double sink in your kitchen, that's two. Every toilet, every sink, every shower, every floor drain, 30, 40 bucks a piece. So, that's typical. So, those are just funding mechanisms that we don't really have in place that other communities do. I'm a tables person, so this is the background data for the visual you just saw. Just again, we're there in bold, so you can see that we're on the high side of middle again, but that's really actually where you want to be. Middle of the pack is good. Having the lowest rates typically mean that you're not investing in your system and that it's probably crumbling around you, and you're probably going to, like, we end up in a consent decree or something, that you're going to ultimately pay that money. So, better to not pay it at an emergency repair rate. And if you're high, you probably have a lot of efficiencies to be gained, and you're just not operating your system in the most effective manner. I will draw your attention, though, to the smaller chart there on the right. That is where we fall without the $12 compliance fee. So, you can see where that shifts, how that shift puts us compared to other surrounding communities. So, with the fee, we're at that 57.21 on average, and that's just using our citywide average. And then without it, we're there at the low side of middle on just rates alone. And then I also just wanted to draw your attention to, I have the column, how they're billed. So, you see there, winter average, winter average, winter average. That is an industry standard or a best management practice in the sewer world. The concept there is simply, water usage for a typical household goes up in the warmer months. People are watering their grass, they have gardens, they have pools, they're washing cars in their driveways and things like that. None of those activities, the water use, none of that goes to the sewer, so it makes sense that we wouldn't want to charge sewer fees for water that never has to be treated. So, then we look at water usage in the cooler months, because that should be the typical water that's actually going down to the drain into the sewer system that requires treatment. So, here, we do bill by default on the winter quarter, and then every year in July, we do a comparison. And if winter quarter is the lowest, then we bill on winter quarter. If your annual average usage is actually lower than the winter quarter, then we bill on that. So, by our ordinance, we bill on the lowest of winter quarter or annual average. If that makes sense? Okay. There are two other entities on here that do allow actual to be billed, but everyone I called, their default is winter quarter. You have to specifically request to be removed from that. And then, onto that $12 fee. It first appeared on bills in 2010, and that was basically designed to pay the debt service on the, about roughly $90 million that we took in debt for the consent decree work that had to be done. So, that included everything from collection system changes, disinfection at the treatment plant, new aeration basins at the treatment plant, a host of projects that were required by the EPA, and so the federal government and the state for us to complete. A lot of entities are in there, Kansas City's in one right now, and that's why their rates are going up. Springfield's in one right now, and their rates are doing the same. It's more common than not these days to start entering into them. We've gotten ours, hopefully, our only one, out of the way, but it was costly. We got it done quickly. That fee started as $3 a month on every account, and then it stair-stepped up 3, 6, 9, 12, until it's flatlined at 12 now for the duration of that debt. And the, last year, we refinanced two of the three issuances. So, the first one will be done at the end of June of '37, and then the next one, June of '40, and then the final one, June of '44. So, that will be when the bond debt was paid, that $12 fee theoretically then goes away because the concept of having the $12 fee, yes, sir.
Will that be just in time that we have to do another one?
Oh, I hope not. I mean, the goal is to not be in another consent decree.
I didn't know.
And that's the only thing that forced that kind of money to be spent all at once.
As we're going along, so do we keep up maintenance and all that? And the, how's that?
So, our capital program funds, our last set of rate increases, and we've been flatlined for two years now, funded depreciation at about $2.5 million a year, so that our rates effectively were set up to spend $2.5 million in putting back into our system every year. So, yes, a lot of our capital projects that you'll see in the proposed budget are piping rehabilitation, station rehabilitation, and things like that. Collection system upsizing for known trouble areas, that's a lot of our, those are a lot of our projects. So, yes, we do try and maintain our system and proactively go after areas we know are teetering on being a capacity issue now, let's just go ahead and get it taken care of before it actually truly becomes an environmental issue. So...
Before you move on... I want to stay with that conversation. So, in comparison with Kansas City and their consent decree, I remember reading that in the paper back then, they got hit with quite a significant dollar amount, and that's why their rates have gone quite up significantly for that. Do you remember what that number was? Or Zach, do you recall what that number was? I want to say they were approaching close to a billion dollars.
Oh, they're...
Easily, yes. I don't remember the percentage increase, but, and they were double-fold. So, there was the consent decree side of things about getting the environmental compliance, but then what Lisa has said here, there was not appropriate investment in the water infrastructure there. So, Kansas City customers have seen what I would call catch-up rate increases the last five to 10 years to bring the water system up to standard, as well as deal with these consent decrees. So, they've certainly seen that, correct?
They're double-digit increases for the next unknown future.
Right.
Somewhere in the nature of 15% to 20% was the, over a multiple period of years.
Councilman Huff?
Yes. So, these, you know, we get questioned this all the time. I know everybody on here's heard this before. So, the bonds we're paying back, what was the projects that were done? Is there a list of them somewhere people can get ahold of them?
There's not a published one anymore. They were on the website as they were being done as part of our capital projects. I can certainly provide you one, but some of the bigger projects in that were, we had to do newer aeration basins at the treatment plant. We did a disinfection system. Up until that point, we didn't actually disinfect at Rock Creek. We had to do several capacity upgrades in the system. And then we also built four 5-million-gallon storage tanks for wet weather events that are excess flows that the plant can't handle. So, 20 million in storage in tanks above ground. So, those were the biggest ones.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Any other questions? So, yeah, just the concept of the $12 fee was just, let's not put it in our rates forever when there's a finite window of time that we'll be paying for that. And then, this one, this, if you look at us as a combined water and sewer utility, because many of them are, if you look at our combined rate, we're just dead middle of the pack, just on the low side, barely low side of middle, if you look at us combined. But also, really, what I really wanted you to look at here is to see that it is definitely the rule and not the exception for sewer to cost more than water. There's a lot of reasons for that. I kind of always joke with people and say, well, let's just start with the obvious. They're starting with a clean, filtered water supply that they just have to dump some chemicals in and clean it up. So, they have a chemical process. We're taking human waste, cleaning it up to basically drinking water standards, and putting it back in a body of water. Our process is chemical and biological. We are one of the most regulated industries out there. One of the most basic, though, costs of our system versus theirs and why we are more costly, is just simple construction costs. So, water, as you know, is pressure, is under pressure. They can go uphill, they can go downhill, they can only be just below the frost line. We flow by gravity for the vast majority of the time. We only have 13 lift stations in all of town. So, we are the deepest ones in the ditch. We have lots of excavations that we do that are 20-plus feet deep. There's a cost associated with building that kind of infrastructure. So, that is a huge one. We flow by gravity. One example, we had a developer looking to build out a couple lots on Little Blue, and he had submitted plans for a lift station for us to take over and have another lift station. Because it cut his construction cost, it went from $3 million to $1.5 million, just on one project, for like, I think it was just covering three lots. It is expensive to go gravity. So, that's probably the biggest reason. Regulatory, as I said, we're one of the most regulated out there. Complexity of treatment, we talked about that a little bit earlier. If you've just got lagoons that things kind of settle and you dredge that every now and again, that's not what we have going on at Rock Creek with aeration basins and filtration devices and just all kinds of piece of equipment. I would love, you are always welcome to come visit them in person. Everyone always enjoys the smell, so come on out. And then another big one is customer base. On the sewer side, even within our own city limits, not every resident is a customer of the sewer utility. Every resident is a customer of water. Not every resident is a customer of sewer, because you can have a private system, you can be on septic, and all those things. Also, water systems usually have the ability to wholesale water, as our system does. Like Dan will tell you frequently, he wholesales about half of his water. That offers a lot of flexibility to a utility, that sewer utilities just don't really have that option. So, those are really the primary differences and what really drives that cost.
So, how many sewer customers are there?
It changes every day, roughly 45,000.
So, why don't we just, so we have the whole picture here, talk about the Little Blue Valley Sewer District? Because we also, we use, some of these cities exclusively use Little Blue Valley and Middle Big, and/or Middle Big Creek for their processing, and we use both. We use a little bit of both, and they have bonds and capital improvements that we, that our rate payers also fund those improvements and the service that we get from Little Blue Valley.
Yep.
So, I don't know whether they were here not all that long ago for a bond issue, and I'll give you the spoiler, they're coming back for another one, too. So, maybe just talk a little bit about...
So, Little Blue Valley, yeah, we're one of 13 entities that are part of that sewer district. Their treatment costs compared to ours are anywhere from seven to 10 times what it costs us to treat in-house. You will see in budget here in the upcoming months, a request, a packet request increase from us just for Little Blue Valley of about, I think it's $830,000, just for the annual increase in fees to them this year. And that's just the increase, and that's not what we're already paying them. So, it's about a 9% increase this coming year. So, it is costly. In some of our master plans, there's been a concept of having a second sewer plant out east somewhere at some point. Obviously, again, you're going to have capital costs associated with that, so do you keep paying it for Little Blue, or do you go in, have another plant? But yeah, our increase, our increases have been roughly 5% a year. This year, it's looking closer to nine.
You may not know the answer to this, but Grandview is almost the same as we are except flipped, where their sewer is $33 and their water is $52.
So, yeah, I know. That one is very odd, and I've talked to several engineering firms that can't explain or figure out why exactly they are so low. They do have a different type of plant, but I believe they're one of the, on the water side, that has a CIP fee attached. Several of those entities, what we were calling around, Dan and I both called to get those numbers, and there were several that, when the water is higher, those are usually the entities that have CIP funds attached. I'd have to check my notes to verify if that's the case with them.
That just caught my eye. Okay. Anything else?
But that's all. Those are really the major issues from my perspective, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next up, Staff Report Overview of Resolution 22723. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Last week, on your regular agenda, under the reports and recommendations of the city manager, we did have a resolution amending the purchasing policy specifically to deal with responsible bidder language. I believe Councilmember DeLucy asked that that item be postponed to have a conversation here at the study session, and the council agreed to that. So, I've asked the city councillor to just give a quick overview of the components of the proposed resolution, and happy to answer any questions prior to bringing that back to your March 21 meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Jeremy Culver. I'm the city councillor. As the city manager pointed out, this would add a paragraph to the procurement policy regarding responsible bidders. Generally, this language is being pulled from existing places within the city's procurement policies, forms, regulations, that sort of thing that we're already using. And some of the feedback that we were getting, I worked with Rich in the purchasing department to come up with this, was that it was hard to sort of navigate because it wasn't all in one place. And so, that's the goal with this, is sort of, it's taking that information that, again, generally already exists in different places, and rather than having to kind of search for it, putting it all here in a place that we thought made sense and all together. So, that's the goal of this. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Councilmember DeLucy, do you have questions?
Of course I do.
Okay.
Mayor, where? The big issue with me with this procurement policy, it puts our management analyst in the same situation with our procurement policy, and we have not had a procurement policy, I think, since 2019. I think we have not had a management analyst at least a year. And it sounds nice to say these two are very important, we need them, but guess what? We need them. And I don't know how you do it, other than to say, we've got to do that as independent agencies this city needs, and that's all there is to it. So, those are the two big issues I've got. And then my second, Jeremy, because you know a lot more of this type than I do, why are some of the policies at 50,000, others are at 100,000, another is at an informal decree? I mean, what is the purpose of all this? Is that defined as to what, a formal? Oh, it is, and I've just not seen it? Because I don't see it anywhere what it means.
I am not exactly sure on your question. This, the language that we're proposing here, which is in Section 8, Public Improvements of the Procurement Policy, this would add a paragraph... of the, of the procurement policy, this would add a, a paragraph B. So it's red in your packet. That's, that currently is the only proposed change that this would put forward. And so it does, and it doesn't have any levels. Like I said, most of this is already, you know, being pulled from, there's some statutory references, there's some other federal regulations that, again, are already part of the city's purchasing policies. This is just meant to consolidate them to one place. So, so this, this 8B is the only proposed change at this point in time to the procurement policy.
I'm looking at signature authority, number 19, and I never before saw C, Finance and Administration Director, designee, as delegated by the city manager. I've never seen the city manager, or the procurement manager, or the finance and administration director approving what the city manager wants. But you're saying that's how we've always done it?
I can't say that's how you've always done it. I'm saying that, that this, that language is not, is, is what is in the policy currently. That is not a proposed change to this policy. That is the existing policy.
Have you done, Jeremy, the written changes?
Yes.
Modified?
I personally did the written changes on this document, and the only changes that I made are in Section 8, which I believe is red on your attachment.
Okay.
So everything else that's in there currently is, is the existing policy. It's, it's, not that it's not up for discussion, but that's not, that is not something we're proposing to change at this point. The only proposed change and what this resolution would approve is the addition of paragraph 8B.
I've never had a P card used under this, but perhaps they've been looked at, looked at since 2019 when Russell left. I mean, has anybody looked at this stuff?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Pardon me, Councilmember DeLucy. We've talked about this several times. She's talking about the lack of a procurement manager or department head. Does that sound familiar, Mr. Walker?
We, we have a procurement division within the finance department.
Okay. So there's a particular person that she remembers that I'd never met, that used to serve in that role? Does this ring a bell at all?
We had a gentleman, yeah, who, who retired from service from the city a few years ago, I believe.
Okay. And so do we have a person in that same role today?
Yes, I, yes, we do. I'm making sure I'm tracking with you, but I believe we're talking about the same thing.
I was going to ask that, or clarify that and make sure I understand, Mr. City Manager. I don't know if that person has the exact same title. I don't know that they're exactly, I, I, I don't know if they are or they aren't. But when Russ, Russell retired, who is, who Councilmember DeLucy remembers, Rich Sessi is, takes care of our procurement. And I know that we've had some departmental reorganizations, that they may fall under our different departments, in a different, you know, office in the, in the city, but we certainly have procurement being handled in the way that, according to our codes and ordinances. I mean, the other point, the management analyst, which we've had a very difficult time filling that position primarily because of very restrictive charter requirements, who would be responsible for reviewing certain things under our procurement policy that we have experienced lately that is just not here to do that. I mean, that's, that's a separate issue we need to address, but we do have procurement.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm up to speed now with the conversation. So we used to have in our procurement division more people than we presently have today, and staff has let me know that the council agenda next week will include a pay plan amendment that is proposing to bring back additional personnel in the procurement division.
To further clarify, so Rich Sessi, who was mentioned, I'd like to look it up because I wasn't exactly sure what Rich's title was. It's Contract and Bids Administrator, and he is within the, the Finance and Administration Department, and that is who I worked with on this language. So that, that, that is the, at least the person that, since I've been around, has been administering this, working with this, and that's who I worked on, with on this language.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Very briefly, Mr. Culver, you've made it fairly clear, but so, so we're perfectly clear. The, the changes you're proposing are a consolidation of existing policy into one spot? These are not policy changes?
The, the only one that we're still, is a, a potential policy change that we're still working through as we get to the next council meeting, is B2 regarding health coverage and retirement benefits. That was, a- as we've gone back and, and looked, because again, this has been sort of difficult to track. You know, we had different samples we were looking at, and as we're looking in lots of different places, as we've gone back and sort of rehashed this, even in prep, to be fair, in preparation for, for this meeting, that's, that is the one piece that we're, that we're not sure about, and we're gonna, you know, that's certainly open for discussion, and we'll talk about that at the staff level. But the, certainly, everything else is, is, we can pinpoint a place within existing policies that that's already there, yes.
So let's get it consolidated. At that point, later on, if we take a look and want to make other policy changes, obviously that's available to us.
Yes, sir.
And, and Madam Mayor, if I can just clarify once more, the, the language that's in 723 is specifically intended to help strengthen our evaluation and awarding of bids. So, you know, I think we've all maybe experienced frustration at times with projects that we awarded their lowest, but not always to most responsible. This is going to help tighten that up and help both of those components. They're there now, but it will consolidate all of this into one place and make certain that the public improvement projects that we're awarding are, are going to both the lowest and most responsible bidders in the city.
Are there other questions regarding this item? I would say the next step in this process, we've done a couple things recently, this will be back for the council's consideration on Monday. And then we need to talk about how we're going to enforce these policies if they are in fact adopted. So that'll be the continuing conversation, but we need to get things agreed upon that they, this is our policy before we get too deep into the woods about how we're going to enforce it. Any other questions? Okay. Our next report is our boards and commission report. Madam City Clerk.
We just have one board this evening, it's the Brand Independence Committee. Recommendation's been made to reappoint Michelle Crumbaw and Angie Judy if there's no objections, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda.
Are there any objections?
None.
Okay. Hearing none, we will add that to the next agenda. There are some vacancies that need to be filled, either by individual council members or by the council. So as always, we are looking for interested people to serve on these boards and commissions, and I encourage you to submit your applications through the city clerk. Are there any other discussion topics for this evening?
Specifically, Mayor?
Yes.
There are, there are two, PUAB and Stormwater. Both those areas have vacancies. I asked Becky if she could add, like, everybody apply for it and give us whether you want to apply, definitely for those two, within the next 13 days. Because these have to be matched up quickly. And if those have not been mailed, Becky, because I can't get out there, would you please put it on, wherever you can put it on, so people know to please answer for those vacancies? Is that possible?
What are you needing?
I think she's looking to put it on, apologize, to put it on the website or, or make it publicly and easily publicly available.
Yeah.
Yeah, for anybody who wants to apply.
Okay. Very good.
And I'd like those made within the next, you know, three weeks, because I, I, I have to make quick reviews on PUAB and Stormwater. So if I could have help, it would greatly be appreciated.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else this evening, Mr. City Manager?
Nothing, thank you.
We're adjourned.